Barrett.
I just have a couple of things. I want to recognize Mike Costley and his crew for they've taken care of several issues that we had in Ward Seven. One of those is on Jim Berg Road, there's a large pipe going under the road and it's starting to collapse from all the heavy trucks that are going in on the Elliott. The Elliott Development trucks that normally are an excessive amount of trucks that aren't normally on that road. They've patched that, but it needs to be fixed because it continues to sink. And it was really, they patched it this morning, but it's really getting bad. So whatever we have to do to get that fixed as soon as possible. An update, we're almost completed with the paving at the Carley Road, Carley Lane, Bayview, Oak Hill, and those five roads in Eagle Point. I drove through there this morning and those are almost, the paving's almost complete on those. And that would be the only thing in Eagle Point that wasn't redone after Katrina with the FEMA project because that didn't go underwater. And so those are almost finished. Also, the culvert on Oak Lawn that was sinking terribly, that is finished as well. And so that was a much needed project. Thank you all for making that happen. That's completed. And then the only other thing that I really have is I'm getting a lot of calls on this with it being boating season. A lot of the roads, especially John Lee Road to the city limits edge, and I'm calling, I've called the county as well from their portion of John Lee Road out to Three Rivers. There's a lot of trees that are really low. And so people are having trouble getting their RVs and their boats out because they're hanging so low. And then also Oak Lawn Road, the one that runs off of Lorraine by Wool Market Grocery. I've had several calls from people having trouble getting their boats and RVs out because of the trees are hanging so low over the road. So if we can get someone out to trim those, I know that it's probably more than what our guys can do, but as soon as possible before we have one guy messed up his air conditioner on the top of his RV. And so to avoid any more of that. And then the only other thing I have, if I could speak with Chief Miller and Jerry after the meeting very briefly. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. And I have a short report. Just want to give kudos to the Biloxi Bombers who redid the Todd Meas Park downtown Biloxi in the Back Bay area. Kudos to those kids, to IP, and also the Biloxi Shuckers for helping them out. And I want to just let everyone know this weekend on the Town Green, Juneteenth Celebration at the Town Green about three o'clock on Saturday. That concludes my report. We're going to move on to the public agenda, citizens' comments. Total amount of time is forty-five minutes total, three minutes per person, three minutes per person. I'm gonna start with anyone on my left. Anyone on my left would like to come up and speak. Please come on up and sign in. Please come up and sign in before you start talking. Mr. Gilbert.
Well, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I haven't been here in a while, but I'm back. I'm here to introduce things. I spoke with the Touring Commission the other day about the events and festival grants. What I'm trying to do is introduce an opportunity to Hiller Park. Hiller Park location next to the VA. What we'll be doing is doing a special use outreach, a special use outreach to Deer Island, to Deer Island and up the river and everywhere else for our veterans and the disabled community and senior citizens whom everyone wants to enjoy. What we're doing is feeding them, music, and festivities. So we don't have a date set yet, but I'm here to introduce it because we're stepping up to the plate tomorrow to merge with my partners. We're going global with new industries for other opportunities for our students and everybody. I'm going across the state as well. The state is going to incorporate all the parks and all historical locations for our disabled community. It's called Quality of Life Initiative with the University of Southern Mississippi. I have this compelled in my heart and my head. And we're introducing Veterans Bottle Water Company. Veteran Bottle Water Company, we're going to donate houses, caskets, and dormitories. This is all incorporated here locally. We're going to use tax revenue dollars within the state of Mississippi. And we're going to get the kids off the street. I have this for us, ladies and gentlemen. Technology, assistive technology, robotics, everything. We're going to retain the kids and we're going to pay for their college. I want them to work for us. I want to employ them. I want to keep them here in the state of Mississippi. I've been recognized internationally. I've been going to speak in New York with United Nations in September. I'm going to sponsor Red Cross for manufacturing opportunity with United States Chamber. Do you understand what I'm telling you? We're going to eliminate poverty and obesity and eliminate any problems with hospitals being with financial burdens. I have this. I'm here to tell you. It's called an L-3C Corporation Louisiana introduced to me. Look at that on Facebook. L-3C Corporation. See if that intrigues you. If it does, let's go to legislature, have initiated. YMCA, Boys and Girls Club, and Back Bay Mission are very receptive about it. Let's see what we say as a community. Thank you much for your time. Have a blessed day.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on my left? Anyone else on my left?
Hi. Hi. How are you?
Howdy.
I'm just coming in. My name is Chet Landry. I live in North Harrison County. I'm coming to speak just specifically on behalf of the Crew of Neptune with respect to the ordinance to amend Code of Ordinance as Chapter 12, Article 4, parades. I've looked through this modification and there's some really nice changes, some things that we've added, some things we've taken out that have been discussed over the last couple of weeks. I do think that a lot of the big red flag issues for my organization have been addressed, maybe not perfectly, but they've been addressed. I just think that in the backend, there's some logistical headaches that I think are still present that I don't know that it needs to be voted on now. I think probably should be tabled maybe for another workshop, but I didn't want to let the opportunity go by to say thank you for the changes that have already been made to this. I know it's something that eventually we have to get on the books and I like what's going into it. I just think there's still a lot of work that needs to be done on it. That's all. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Landry. Is there anyone else on my left? Anyone else on my left? Is there anyone on my right?
Afternoon, everybody. I'm going to follow up what Chet was saying there. The current draft, I think you have before you now, has addressed some of the major concerns, operational costs, and other concerns. So a lot of the major things have been addressed very well. But if you put on your operational cap, we'll start looking at the fact that we're going to have to apply for a permit for cruising the coast and everybody else is going to have to do the same. There's still some vagueness there and some issues that I think need to be addressed. For example, cruising the coast is not really clear. We have seven events within the city of Biloxi during cruising the coast time. And do one application or it's going to be seven. So if we do seven, then the costs go back up again. So there's some issues there that's not really clear. And it's not really clear also too about the Coliseum and how it relates. We have your vendor statue, for example, the vendor, the vendor portion of the ordinance says that, and I think you're really after vendors that are out on the street vending. I'm not sure, but we have two hundred and eighty vendors at our swap meet, for example, at the Coliseum. Are all those folks going to have to come in and get qualified as a vendor, as well as apparel vendors and other vendors too? So that's not really clear as to how that would work. So that needs to be clarified a little better. Other requirements, there's no advertising until a permit is in hand. Well, we, Cruising the Coast, advertise all year round. We're promoting this event. We have newsletters going out in March and July and other nationwide and regional and local advertising. So that would be a problem. The indemnity agreement is, I've seen a lot of deals fall apart because of the indemnity agreement. We have no idea what that agreement's going to look like. So that's concerning. And just, you know, just to, I picked a few things just to let you know. There's even a provision there about animals and reptiles. We're responsible for keeping animals and reptiles a hundred and fifty away, a hundred and fifty feet away from any special event that's going on. It's going to be hard to do that, particularly like Mardi Gras, for example. That would be very difficult. The parking situation along, excuse me, Highway ninety, RV parking is still of concern. And I've sent all these notes on the whole ordinance to Peter and hopefully we can get together and talk about, and like I said, I just gave you all an example of some of them. And down the road, I'm still concerned about the effect of this ordinance on the potential future events in the city of Biloxi. So thank you. I look forward to hopefully working with you all and trying to make something that will work for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you again. Is there anyone else on my right? Anyone else on my right? Anyone in the back of the room? With that being said, citizen comments are now closed. We're going to move on to our policy agenda. Ordinance A, second reading. Carrie?
Ordinance to amend the zoning district map for the establishment of a planned development infield district master plan and a preliminary subdivision replat for the construction of a Holly Street housing development.
That was initially motion by Councilman Guy, second by Councilman Lawrence. It seems like a good fit for the community building houses and that's what we want, repopulating East Biloxi. So I'm okay with that. Mr. Lawrence?
I support you.
Any other questions from the council?
I was at the Planning Commission meeting where this came up. I mean, I think it's a good fit. We're looking for housing development in East Biloxi. There's plenty of room for more development, right, Mr. Creel? There is. So I'm in favor of this. Thank you.
Okay. Call for the question. All in favor? Okay, six zero, motion carry. Ordinance A passes. Okay, we're going to move on to ordinance B. Carrie?
Ordinance to approve a zoning map amendment to authorize a change in zoning for three parcels of land from neighborhood business to community business for two-two-six Tuxedo Street.
That was originally moved by Mr. Lawrence, second by Dr. Tisdale. Mr. Lawrence?
Sitting down with the POPO and Jerry Creel, working on this overlay district. I think this is one of these days we need to table. Do we get all of it back from Jerry and the mayor? What are we going to do with this? I'm just table it, subject to call, when we complete overlay district.
Okay, Dr. Tisdale?
Yeah, I have nothing to add to Mr. Lawrence's comments. I agree with him. Thank you.
Okay, is that a motion to?
A motion to table, subject to call.
I'll second that.
Moved by Mr. Lawrence, second by Dr. Tisdale. Any other questions from the council?
George, I'm sorry. Can you give me, I didn't understand what you said, what your basis for wanting to table this is?
We're working on the overlay district, the Keesler, this system side of that. So we're trying to find out what we can put there. Everything's going to relate to what we do to help Keesler, to support Keesler. So that's why they put together this overlay district. And I'm just supporting that until it's get done, then we can bring this back and look at this.
I have a question. Is this one, is this one tied to J?
Same, the same.
Same thing. Okay. Any other questions from the council? Okay, call for the question. All in favor? One, two, three, one, two, three, four, one, two, three, three, four. And all against? One. Okay. Motion carries. Okay, we're going to move on to policy agenda C.
Ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinance as Chapter 12, Article 4 pertaining to parades.
I'll move it.
Moved by Mr. Lawrence. I need a second.
Yeah, this first, I mean, second reading, this has already been a motion.
First reading?
Second reading. Who made the motion, Carrie?
Oh, okay, okay. Let me go back. Okay, we're talking about C, D, E, F, G, N, H. Okay, you guys. Okay, this was moved by Dr. Tisdale and second by Mr. Lawrence. So Dr. Tisdale?
Yeah, I'd like to approve these and then table them, subject to call. Well, let me go, let me go back then. I would suggest we table them, subject to call for our, perhaps our, because we have another workshop coming up on all of these. We want to get input from everybody. That workshop is going to be next, after next Tuesday's meeting, the twentieth. You're right. So I would move that we table, actually C through H, but we'll take these, I guess, one at a time. I'll motion as a, I'll motion that we table this, table item C.
Why don't, now, is this going to go C, D, E, F, G, and H, correct?
That's correct.
You want to make a motion to move all of them to a table?
I would like to do that at this time.
Okay.
Item C through H be tabled, subject to call.
Want a second there, Mr. Lawrence? Any questions by anyone? Go ahead.
I support the table. However, a quick question. I know the chief, one aspect of what we're doing this for is to give him the authority to handle these pop-up type events, right? Is there a way to create some type of ordinance while we're mucking through all of this to just, to just limit, limit some type of ordinance to give him the authority to address those types of major concerns that he really has? Can we find an ordinance provision that will just apply specifically to that narrow issue and give the chief the teeth to take care of those types of situations? Any thoughts on that, chief? Yeah, I think, I think that through all the complexity of this, of this ordinance and this, this ordeal we're going through, I think that is one of the things I think we all agree on. And if we can narrowly tailor an ordinance to give the chief that type of enforcement authority, I think we could get that through unanimously and still work on the remainder of this, of this ordinance. And I think that would be a great step forward to help, help the chief. That's all I have.
Any other? Go ahead, Mr. Lawrence.
Yeah, I think this was a good idea to put this on the table. And I think we improved a lot from when we first started. And it's just like Woody said and Jeff, there's still things we have to do. So now when we had the workshop, maybe we can narrow down a few more things, just get better at what we doing. And that's all we're trying to do is improve. It should be the best thing for the chief to have something to control them with and everything else. So I think it's a good thing that, as I said, people could read it now. They could see what's on the table. And this still will change. So I just think that's a good thing.
Okay, anyone else? Call for the question. All in favor of tableing it? Okay, six zero, motion carry for table. Resolution, okay, we're moving on down to resolution.
Resolution for a vacation of an unimproved public right of way located between two parcels of land having frontage on Brown Street and Holly Street.
I'll move that one.
I'll second it.
Second it. Motion by me, second by Dr. Tisdale. This is tied in with the first one, so everyone's okay with that one. Dr. Tisdale?
Yeah, I'm good with that. This is a sister resolution to four A, which was the development there along Holly Street, yeah.
Absolutely. Any other questions from the council? All in favor? Six zero, motion carry. Resolution J.
Resolution to grant conditional use approval to authorize the establishment of a cannabis cultivation facility for two-two-six Tuxedo Street.
So I'm moving.
Moved by Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, was, was that a motion to approve it or to table it?
I'm going to table it. Put it on the table. Then I'm going to put it, subject to call, correct.
All right.
This goes in with the other one. We already.
You're moving the table.
Table, right, subject to call.
And I'll second that.
Any questions?
No, unless anything you want.
Dr. Tisdale?
Nothing to add.
I have one question. Are we planning on bringing this back up later on in any way, fashion, or form?
I think what the mayor was proposing is it to let this used to be considered as part of what we're doing with the overlay district to see if it's one of those businesses that would be appropriate for what our goal is, which to put in businesses that would support Keesler. So that, that's what he had asked, table subject to call for that reason.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I have a quick question.
Okay.
How, how long is it going to take to come up with, with this overlay district and get that back before the council?
Well, we're working on the language right now. I would expect that it would probably be advertised within the next thirty to forty-five days for the Planning Commission meeting. There'll be a public hearing there and then once that public hearing is held, it would come to the city council.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Okay, call for the question. All in favor?
What, what, we're voting in favor of?
Voting to table it, voting to table it. We just, yeah. So it'll be five-one, like normal. All right, K, four K.
Resolution granting minor subdivision final plat approval for parcel fronting Pops Ferry Road.
Need a motion on that?
I'll make a motion.
Moved by Mr. Barrett.
I'll second it.
Second by Dr. Tisdale. Any questions? Mr. Barrett? All right. Dr. Tisdale?
None. My understanding is Jerry, this is going to be a little residential development, I believe.
Yes, sir. Actually, this lot that they're creating is on Starks Road, which is a private road that runs beside Starks Construction. It just has a, because it's a private road, it has a Pops Ferry address. And all they're doing is creating a lot in there that would meet the zoning standards, and it does.
Does this front Pop, does this front Pops Ferry Road? It doesn't.
No, sir.
There's a parcel in front of that and this is behind that.
It's at the north, kind of at the north end of Starks Drive on the west side.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? All in favor? Six zero, motion carry. Need a motion on the consent agenda? Moved by Mr. Lawrence, second by Dr. Tisdale. Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, I talked to y'all earlier about the Old Keith. That's supposed to end in June of twenty-three. We extending this to make sure everything's running in order. So while we are doing a committee, when you have, it's supposed to, the city takes it over according to the twenty-year lease this month. So we extending this for what reason?
Councilman, what you're implying, I think, is why would we extend their contract terms when we have the option of taking it over and selling it? Is that what you're getting to? I think the answer is we're not ready to do that.
You're not ready to take it over?
We're not ready to sell it and.
We're not selling, we're just taking it over. You ain't selling anything yet.
We have a very complicated legal arrangement. The land is owned by the city. The building is owned by the museum and the city leases the museum building back. And that was done at the time when the grants were all sought to rebuild after the storm. That's the very complicated legal arrangement we have. And we have a management agreement with them, just like we do with the other museums. It covers day-to-day operations. The city is, I can't speak for the mayor and I certainly can't speak for the council, but I don't think we're ready to throw the, what is it? Baby out with the bath water. We're not ready to do something as like selling the museum.
So we're working through the legal aspects of all of it.
So really, we're just pushing the can down the road here by taking the agreement and extending it for another year.
I can understand that. And on the, the selling all this property, we sell it to one group, to M, N, O, and P?
I mean, right now, based on their financial reports to us, the Oro Keith Museum, they're doing better. They're not as much in the red as they have been in the past and their, their finances are in better shape. So I don't think this is time to, to move, to pull the plug on them.
I can, I can accept that. My, my next question was M, N, O, and P.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Now, now I got you. Oscar, Romeo, whatever. Okay. It would be helpful if I could understand you.
Well, whatever. You gotta listen. You gotta listen better.
Basically, you're seeing what we're, on M, we're surplusing the property. On M, we're taking an option with, to purchase, to purchase the property. On O, we're declaring access to the building. And P, we're taking an option. We're being given an option or we're giving an option to somebody to pay us to have the option to take the building down and put something new there. Basically, that's a real, those four items are all run together. So it's surplusing, getting, taking an option, surplusing, taking an option.
Let me add a little bit. That's part of the Main Street, Howard Avenue redevelopment, you know, opportunity, we're thinking. And there's a number of grants and it would significantly add ten to fifteen million dollars worth of value to those properties if they're successful in acquiring. But it's all part of a redevelopment of Main Street.
All right. And on R, your favorite subject, Mike, the same. Now, we finished with this particular company. I know we're not finished. But you finished with that black line?
Finished with the exterior. This is the last payment, four point four million dollars of work that that company did on the exterior and some on the interior of the building.
Soliciting the contract.
So are they going to do more work for us, doing something different, or we have a different company?
We are soliciting.
Well, we're in the middle of, and we've had some meetings with some of the folks who have responded as far as management of the property or properties and then looking at what needs to be done in order for that interior to be turned into, you know, a production area. So this is going to complete what was done on the exterior. The exterior, the envelope is sealed. And we're going to look, we're soliciting a number of things that need to be added to the interior, fly tower and some of the things that were done in the construction phase. So we're moving on that rapidly and figuring out, you know, what funding opportunities on the interior, maybe another two million dollars worth of, you know, LED walls, different things that need to be added to make it a top-notch facility and seating and some of these other options. But this is the last of the exterior contract. We'll move into the interior phase shortly.
All right. And the last two, S and T, this is the charging station.
Yeah.
This is money coming from somewhere else.
Right.
Profit comes from somebody else. We're not really putting up anything.
Right. Again, we're taking a shot and seeing if that's secure. Again, you look at, so as we met with the developers and it will enable that whole intersection, that whole part of Interstate Ten to leap forward as far as EVs and some of these other things that are going to happen over the next course of, you know, ten years. So this is, we felt was an opportunity to, to research and see. research and, and see some of the federal monies, especially the incentives from, from EV, but also go along with the development plans. Jerry, you can add anything to uh, that if you like, but uh, it, it's worth pursuing and that's what we're doing.
Alright. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Mr. Newman? Mr. Demming?
I'm good.
Dr. Tisdale?
Uh, two items, please. Item E, uh, Christie's not here, but this was an emergency repair for Wash Fayard Bridge. I was just wondering.
And based on the inspect, the state inspection, we were, we were asked to, to, to do some emergency repairs.
Okay. Good enough.
Those are underway.
Okay. And on I, this is the uh, agreement, low-income housing rehabilitation with Back Bay Mission. Who from the city supervises these funds or the expenditures of these funds to be sure there's, you know, looking over their shoulder, be sure it goes to who it's supposed to go to? I think it's a great service. As far as I know, it's uh, as long as they have the volunteers to do the work and the structure is occupied and the.
And your budget.
The resident is uh, 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 determined to be of a low-income household, then this is, this is, this is really a godsend for some of those older folks particularly who can't afford to, to renovate their, rehabilitate their homes or whatever.
Actually, what we do is we give them the money for administration purposes and then the materials are usually included in with whatever the job happens to be. But it's uh, it's for hardship cases. A lot of times it's for code enforcement cases where we get out there on a code enforcement property and it's obvious the person just doesn't have the means to pay for it themselves. So uh, they've always been good to provide the materials and the labor to take care of whatever we've asked them to do.
Do we get a?
This is, this is a, just a renewal of our contract with them.
Right.
The actual money that we give them is in the community development budget.
Correct.
Approved in, at the time you do the budget hearings.
Do we get a summary report from?
Mr. Creel?
Yes.
Don't, don't you get a full report from Back Bay Mission every year?
We do, and we actually put that in the contract this time, that they would have to provide us with documentation to show what projects they've done. If you'll remember last year, the council voted to increase this from 25,000 to 50,000. And they provided a list of all the properties that they had performed on. And now, they're required to do that every year in order to requalify.
Yeah. And Dr. Tisdale, I worked, I worked with them on that.
Right. That was my question. I mean, it's a good program. It's a, it's a good group to work with. I just wanted to know that we got some sort of summary report so we know the money went.
We do, yes, sir.
Thank you. That concludes my questions. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Barrett?
Only question that I, sorry. The only question I have is um, on S. This is something we're not gonna be, and, and I think George already asked this, but um, we're not gonna be out of any money. This is, uh, the match is gonna come from the people who actually, so if we get the grant, they're gonna supply the match, uh, the, the property owners, correct? Okay, that's the only question I have.
Okay. Thank you. And I have no, nothing else. Okay, I'm gonna call for the question. I'll take the exceptions after all. In favor? Okay, six, zero. George, any exception? None. Ms. Newman? Demming? None. Against C. Dr. Tisdale? C. C as in cat.
Right, no exceptions, thank you.
And Mr. Barrett? Okay. Consent agenda pass. Okay, we're gonna move. G, G, not C, G. Okay. Alright, um, Mr. Creel, code enforcement?
Okay. Uh, item A on the agenda, Christian Centafanto et al., 692 Michelle Drive. This The house is vacant. The front yard is bad, but the backyard is really bad.
Okay. Is there anyone here to speak on Michelle Drive? Anyone here to speak on Michelle Drive? Consider that matter closed.
Item B, Elizabeth S. Morton, 166 Gill Avenue. This case has been resolved. Item C, Tha- Da- Dee Nguyen, 408 Howard Avenue. This case has been resolved. Item D, James Hayward Pollard Jr., 211 Keller Avenue. This case has been resolved. And item E, Sang Van Tran, 211 Doris. This property's still in violation. They have cut a portion of the property. They just didn't finish and there's still some limbs and trees and overgrowth.
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of Doris Street? Anyone here to speak on behalf of Doris Street? Consider that matter. Okay, we're gonna move on to routine agenda.
Some mood.
Move on, Mr. Lawrence. I need a second.
Second.
Second by Dr. Tisdale. Mr. Lawrence?
I'm all, with the latest.
Good afternoon, council. As of this morning, we have $547,000 in step three of five in the Mississippi Mima PA website. Uh, that is the stage where the governor's authorized representative approves it. Uh, so I expect to see that money going over to step four or five hopefully by tomorrow. If not, I'll reach out to Mima, ask them to process that. Once it reaches step four or five, it usually takes us 10 to 12 business days to reach it to our city accounts.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, anyone else? All in favor, routine? Okay, six, zero. Motion Carrie. And before we recess, I wanna announce that the city of Biloxi is holding a job fair June 14th and the 17th, 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the Wool Market City Center. That's on Kaylee Cole, Kaylee Cole. Alright, I need a motion to recess.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Lawrence, second by Dr. Tisdale. Any questions? All in favor? Let's call it a meeting.
George, that insurance meeting next.